Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Would the clerk please read?
Resolution eighteen twenty-one approving the issuance of City of Bloomington, Indiana Park District Bonds, Series two thousand eighteen A in an amount not to exceed three million four hundred thousand or four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars to finance the costs of capital improvements at certain park facilities and costs incurred in connection with the issuance of such bonds. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution takes one of, one of statutory steps necessary to approve the issuance of bonds by the City of Bloomington Parks District under Indiana Code thirty-six, ten, four, thirty-five, and six, one point one, seventeen, twenty point five, in order to finance certain capital improvements at facilities operated by the City of Bloomington Parks Department, including the design, acquisition, and construction of, one, improvements along Seventh Street Greenway, including bike lanes, a greenway trail, multi-use paths from the B line trail to Woodlawn, and Union to the State Road forty-five, forty-six bypass. Two, trails and land acquisition for easements along the RCA Powerline Trail. And three, all related and incidental expenses incurred in connection therewith, and the cost of selling and issuing these bonds. Your committee recommendation for this resolution is five, one, three.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that Resolution eighteen twenty-one be adopted.
Second. Thank you. Looks like we have a tag team presenting tonight.
Good evening. Jeff Underwood, City Controller. You have three resolutions before you tonight for Parks Bonds. These are property tax-based bonds. The resolutions would authorize up to ten point two six five million dollars worth of bonds, with a maximum rate of twenty years and a maximum interest rate of six percent. And again, those are maximums. They're not what we think we're gonna hit. So some of the prices on projects will be less than what we advertised as the maximums because of that. These are financing. These started with the Parks Board with a declar- decla- dec- I cannot say it. Let's set up again tonight. A declaratory resolution asking you to review it and approve it. And then if you do approve, would go back to the Parks Board for a confirmatory resolution, and then we would be able to go out to market. As I said, there's three, three resolutions. We'll talk about the projects under each resolution tonight with Paula and the team. But up next, I'd like to introduce Les Coyne, a Parks Board member, that have a few comments about the bond.
Steve, I thought you had a bad hair day. Anyway, thank you for allowing us to come before you and present what we're very excited about. The Parks Board and Parks Department is very pleased to be taking a leadership role and excited to take this leadership role in a celebration of the city's bicentennial. We've already reviewed it. We've already passed it to you. And we're anxious to get it back so we can take a declaratory statement of support again. My job is to present to you why you should invest and why you should let us take the lead in this. And I'm gonna be fairly brief. I've been involved with the Parks Department and the Parks Board, as many of you know, for many years. The department has always taken a very forward-looking, expansive, and even aggressive and inclusive view towards all of our capital projects over many years. We've worked with citizens of this community extensively and almost overwhelmingly on some projects. We've worked with both public and private partners. We've worked with five administrations that I've been in contact with and an equal number of city councils. And they've taken basically a position of great faith in us. And I think over those years, we've demonstrated that we're capable of delivering on that faith and trust. You are authorizing a major investment on the part of the community, the citizens, that will be paying a bill. And so the folks that actually deliver on those projects are important. I think that during this time and as we approach this project, we know how to do it. I think we've delivered to this community through the talents of the people on that staff some projects that have set us forward substantially. Set us forward in terms of the quality of life of all members of this community, regardless of your income stature or whatever. Most of what we deliver in our capital facilities is free. Most of what we deliver through our capital projects enhances the quality of life. Most of what we deliver through our projects actually serve economic and community development. I think as we've gone through the last decade, we've clearly seen how that happens. All of these factors happen. We've seen the B line trail actually become more than something I could have imagined. And I had pretty high expectations for it. We're at the threshold of delivering and in the process of delivering another project that the community, you, the administration, has trusted us to deliver at a level that is commensurate with the quality this community deserves. What's exciting about this project is it's totally doable at a high level. We know how to do this. We have the kinds of relationships with the various partners that we need. I think we have the trust of the community to work with us extensively about how they perceive it ought to unfold. Take the Switchyard Park. That's been in planning for twenty years. It's been four administrations that have had a vision for that. We took a year and many, many meetings with various community groups to put that plan together. And amazingly, that plan has stood. And it stood because we believe in that kind of process. So I'm assuring you, from the board perspective, that that's how we do business and that's how we'll do business on this one. It's also important to note that I had to put this together rather quickly tonight, so I'm but the confidence issue is not small. This is a tax burdened bond. We've done this and do this regularly, actually. We are on a cycle of a bond issue. We have done revenue bonds. We know what it means to be in a sense of business. We know how to plan. We know how to build models. This one is exciting because it is about parks' kinds of activity. And it's the kinds of things that, that I've seen this community take pride in. We look at the park that straddles College and Walnut north of town. Who would have ever thought that would have been a park? We started out with a sculpture and a bunch of eroded ditches. We teamed up with utilities. We teamed up with other partners and put in a, I think, powerful example of how we like to manage the environment, how we like to manage our water resources. I think that's symbolic of how we think in this community and how we partner and how we work together. So I'm going to quit now. I cheerlead it a bit tonight. But this is going to be exciting, interesting, and, and a bit of a challenge, but we're really looking forward to it. Thank you very much and appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paula McDevitt, Director of the Parks and Recreation Department. The Parks and Recreation Department operates off of a five-year master plan. Our master planning process and having a master plan is a key requirement for our national accreditation. And we have been accredited since two thousand and one. Our master planning process kicks off every five years with a citizen interest survey. We hire a consultant and we ask our citizens how we're doing. It's our report card. It's our feedback. And we take the results from those surveys and we draft our master plan. And I can tell you that consistently, through all the master plans that we've had for several decades, we consistently hear from our community that not only do they value and enjoy our trails, but they want more. The proposed Trails and the Bicentennial Bond will provide the missing links to our existing trail system. It will welcome community and visitors to our beautiful city through enhanced gateways. We'll be able to plant trees in vacant areas and add to our tree canopy. And we'll be able to enhance our downtown alleys, making a beautiful statement and welcoming area for all. This evening, we're going to take you through our presentation, project by project. And we have several staff here who are, will take you through the slides and will be happy to answer your questions. We'll start with Beth Rosenbarger, who is the Bicycle and Pedestrian Planner from the Planning and Transportation Department, Dave Williams, who is the Operations Division Director for the Parks and Recreation Department, and Adam Wason, the Director of the Public Works Department. So with that, we will begin our slideshow. Thank you.
Happy Halloween. I'm Beth Rosenbarger with the Planning and Transportation Department, here to talk with you about, oh, we don't, Seventh Street. Classic. There we go. So I'll add on to what Paula said and note that it's wonderful that people want, enjoy our trails and want more trails, since they fit in with so many adopted city goals and can help us achieve a lot of the things we're trying to achieve in our community. And I'm also happy to hear you all are very on board with the Sustainability Action Plan, 'cause that should make my job pretty easy tonight. So I think you all are familiar, 'cause everybody was here last time, the proposed project for Seventh Street. The Seventh Street Greenway is the corridor from the B line to Woodlawn is the first section. And the second section is from Union Street to the bypass. And we do want to make sure the language, as noted by Joe Hoffman, great recommendation, within the bond says, "We'll have some flexibility in case on the neighborhood greenway section from Union to the bypass, if a different street, portions of Eighth Street make sense." We want to react to that and be flexible on it. So the purpose of this project is to work toward one of our goals of creating a high comfort bicycle facility. And we, it connects neighborhoods, the B line, downtown campus, and other neighborhoods. And the importance of being high comfort is to attract new users. So we're currently at about a five percent bicycle mode share. That's really excellent, but you know, all of our goals say we want to increase that. To become, for example, a platinum bicycle-friendly community, we need to be at twelve percent. The difference between five percent and twelve percent is an entirely new user group. So five percent, the people who currently bike, are basically sometimes like me, like we're called enthused and confident, or the one percent who are spandex clad most of the time. So these groups are wonderful and we're happy to have them. But in order to attract the attractive group of interested but concerned, we have to build more high comfort facilities. And what that means is the B line. People who use the B line, there are a lot of folks who use it, who won't ride a bike anywhere else in town and by the B line or Clear Creek Trail or Jackson Creek Trail. So people who bike, part of the segment using that facility, will not bike on the street in Bloomington. And what it requires to attract that group are physically separated infrastructure. So that is a greenway, a trail, or a physically separated bicycle lane. And that is what we're proposing for the section of Seventh Street from B line to campus. So that attracts more users and people are safer and also feel safer. Another important note about the project is it, we will work with transit because it is a very high bus route. Right now, the buses have to pull over or sometimes they can't get to the curb, which makes accessing the bus stop difficult. Or if somebody has mobility challenges, that is a lot harder if you can't get to the curb. So we can, with the project, make different bump outs along the way and plan the bicycle facility around those bus stops to improve the bus system through there as well. Then the section from Union to the bypass will be a neighborhood greenway style, which involves traffic calming and different elements to help reduce motor vehicle speeds or also, as we say, reduce illegal speeding and make it comfortable for people walking and biking to increase the use of that facility as well. This is just a map of the two sections we're talking about, again, Seventh Street, B line to campus, and Union to the bypass. And again, this is conceptual possibility of what the B line to campus section will look like. We will, of course, continue the sidewalks that are there, tree plants, make space for a physically protected bicycle lane, which will include some sort of curb, bollards, or something different between bicyclists and moving traffic. This was, you know, the example we looked at last time from West Lafayette, Indiana. And this is another example from Austin, Texas. And this is our Allen Street temporary greenway right now, with examples of different traffic calming elements. And we have collected data on that street and the average, or the eighty-fifth percentile speed has gone from twenty-six miles per hour to seventeen miles per hour, which sometimes doesn't sound like a big deal, but actually, as a pedestrian, that is a very big difference and can have huge impacts in terms of a crash or some other incidents. It also improves stopping distance for vehicles, 'cause the slower you're going, the faster it is to stop. All right. And then, just in case you wanted more information about it, I would say this project is important because it's related to a lot of our adopted goals already, in case they're not fresh. From our comprehensive plan, we have a goal of increasing sustainability, a separate one to improve public transit, which this does work with transit, and we are working with transit to improve access to the bus stops, improve the bicycle and pedestrian network, prioritize non-automotive modes, and protect neighborhood streets. Additionally, we dug into some data with my colleague, worked on this, to identify how many residents live within a quarter mile of the facility that we're looking at. A quarter mile is the distance we use for access to bus stops. And just the two sections without including campus are about eighty-seven hundred people. So potentially, if we're looking at an eight, a quarter mile access area, eighty-seven hundred people live within the limits of this project. And if we include the entire length of the project, which is from Adams to Morningside and Third, where we want to do the whole thing in the future, it's about twenty-two thousand people, which is amazing, 'cause that's a quarter of our population, but it is the middle of town, so that makes sense. That's all I have, but if you have any questions about the project, I would be happy to answer those after Dave presents. Thanks.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Good evening. Dave Williams, Operations Director. The first project in our listing has been referred to as the RCA Park Powerline Trail, also the Duke Easement Trail. This is a great opportunity to connect five city park facilities and trails, starting from Switchyard Park on the main entrance at Roger Street, heading west through a very substantial easement area from Roger Street to Weemer Road, about one point three miles. It would connect Switchyard Park, it would get bikes and pets very close to a Clear Creek Trailhead at Tap Road, to the immediate northwest, Wapahani Mountain Bike Park, and to the far north, Twin Lakes Recreation Park. So this would be a, certainly achieve our goals of connectivity and alternative transportation routes to connect our facilities. The Griffey Lake Loop Trail.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Mr. Williams, do you mind if we pause now so we can look at just the whole Resolution eighteen twenty-one? We'll ask our questions, allow the public to make comment, and then we'll ask you back for eighteen twenty-two.
Certainly.
Do you mind? Thank you. Are there questions from my colleagues on Resolution eighteen twenty-one? Okay. Well, then we'll go to the public, and if there's any comment from the public on Resolution eighteen dash twenty-one.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Crabtree. I'm a Bloomington resident. And I wanted to start by saying that I appreciate the work put into the various proposals by the staff of the City of Bloomington regarding these three bonds. I'm kind of speaking to all three, 'cause I want to get my statement in. I hope at some point, all of the projects can be funded. However, I don't feel now is the time for all of them, because our city has many more pressing issues. I understand the mayor spoke earlier, this doesn't have to be seen as an either-or, but I see it as a what-do-we-do-first kind of situation. I believe our first priority should be investing in the people who need the most. And later, if funding allows, we can continue to make our city more beautiful. If it's possible to do it all, which was discussed last week, then let's do the most important work first. I'm reminded of Principal Five of the Poor People's Campaign, an excerpt of which reads, "We believe that people should not live or die from poverty in the richest nation ever to exist." I believe that people should not live in poverty while we beautify the city for those who already have so much. We all make decisions every day regarding what we will spend our money on first. For many of us, that's easy, because we don't have to choose between which necessity we will forego. We decide which nice-to-have we will forego. As a community, I prefer we spend our money on the necessities for all first, rather than the nice-to-haves for some. I encourage the city council to vote no on at least some of these three bonds. And I encourage the city council and the mayor to work together to determine how we could spend the rest of this money to support the most needy in our community. I'm sure there is a way to fund some of these projects now and still do a bond or series of bonds to support those who are homeless, struggling to find affordable housing, or suffering from substance abuse. So I just ask you to take that under consideration, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Crabtree. Anybody else have a comment?
Is this a comment on the Bridge in the Trail?
Uh, no, this is eighteen twenty-one, Seventh Street Greenway RCA Power. So we'll come back to council for final comment. Ms. P. Motz Smith.
I'm glad that Mr. Coyne was here tonight to speak to the long history of our Parks and Recreation Department and our Parks Board in completing successful projects that really have helped Parks and Recreation rise to the level of winning two gold awards, national awards. They are an excellent department. They do great work. And the result is an excellent trails and park system in our community. As I mentioned at last week's Committee of the Whole, I really feel like these bonds are icing on the cake, rather, rather than addressing the needs of people who don't have anything to eat. The mayor, at the outset, and it was unfortunate, he couldn't stay and speak during the actual consideration of the projects. But he said, you know, it's not either-or. We can do the Parks Bonds, and we have done and will continue to do things for those who are less fortunate in our community. And yet, these are general obligation bonds. They're not revenue bonds, so that they will add to our property taxes, between thirty and forty-eight dollars per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. To most of us, that's not a lot, but when you're struggling to get by, it can be. And if I'm going to raise taxes on people, I want to prioritize what the, the, the needs of those who are less fortunate, quite frankly. I want to prioritize, as Ms. Crabtree said, necessities, rather than the nice-to-have things. And I frankly find most of the projects listed in, for these bonds, to be nice-to-haves. The way they are grouped currently kind of makes it difficult because I feel like the Seventh Street Greenway project can make a significant dent in our greenhouse gas emissions through less people taking single occupancy vehicles and rather being comfortable enough to bicycle. But the other half of this bond in creating a new trail is, it's that icing on the cake. It's nice-to-have, but it's not as important as many, many other needs in our community. It's not, in my view, worth raising property taxes. It's something we could do eventually, especially since a lot of the area between the starting and ending points of that trail are, is not developed currently, the Sudbury Farm piece. So it makes much more sense to put off that particular project until later. So on this particular resolution, which includes the Seventh Street Greenway and the RCA Powerline Trail, I'm going to vote no, because my, even though I like the Seventh Street Greenway project, I think the other half is not the best way to spend our money, when we have pressing needs of people who cannot find housing they can pay for, who struggle because they have very low wage, low-wage jobs, and who also struggle with mental health and addiction. These are all, somebody pointed out to me on Facebook, these are, these are societal issues and Bloomington can't solve them. Well, that may be true, but Bloomington can do more than we're currently doing. We can offer more addiction treatments. We can create a public-private partnership for more affordable housing projects. We don't even have a detox center in Bloomington, which is something that is sorely needed so people don't have to leave their family support base in order to get that much-needed help. There are definite improvements we can make on the local level. I agree that we're not going to solve all these, these big problems, but there's more we can do, and I think that's what we should prioritize. So I will be voting no on this bond issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fulan?
Thank you. Yes, I want to echo many of the things that my colleague has said, that I, I have a little bit of different perspective. I think that, you know, we have, we, we talk about lots of things. We don't necessarily always see the embodiment of that talk in projects. We are rightly proud of our Parks Department. We, we have done so much with it. It's made the quality of living so much better in Bloomington. I don't necessarily want to vote against the ten million dollars in these three projects. But I sort of, I mean, if we're talking about the bicentennial, we're talking about sustainability, which we did tonight. There should have been another, a fourth bond, a three million dollar or so project, to build another Crawford Homes or to provide other services that are not directly about recreation and enjoyment. I can support the Series A bonds, because not only does the Seventh Street Greenway, do, I mean, I liked what Mr. Coyne said about Miller Showers Park. It's a really good illustration of how you can do two things at once. You not only create a recreational place, but it actually manages our stormwater and wastewater. And we got put way ahead of other cities when we did that project, who still haven't separated their, they have sanitary sewer overflow problems and the like, that we had this park doing for us. It has been since the year two thousand. The Powerline Trail is actually going through a part of town that's underdeveloped and affordable. And so if it can inspire affordable housing development on the area, in that area, I think that's a, a thing we're supporting. So I have enough comfort with this to support the A Series, but I'll have other things to say about the other two to come. So I'm going to vote yes on this, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sterbaum.
Yeah, are we voting on these one at a time? Is that what we're doing? Okay. I think the Greenway is something we've planned for, for quite some time, and it's an example to show that there are other greenways that we need in the city. It's good for neighborhoods, it's good for people using the streets in town with their children, it's good for safe bicycle riding. It's a big idea, and these ideas are ideas that have been developed over a long period of time, and this is the only body that can put them in. Private entities are not going to build trails, they're not going to build greenways, they're not going to have the legislative ability to calm traffic as needed in those greenways. We're the only body that can do it, and, you know, these are new needs that we're meeting in this era. You know, I encourage and appreciate my colleague's concern, and share my colleague's concern. I say we need to develop the same kind of political will to bring that to this point, where we can make another vote on that. But tonight, I'm going to support these bonds for the reason that this is, this is what we do as a city, this is long-range. You know, we all walk on parks that other people plan for us, you know, and when we're young, we think, oh, here's a park. But you get older and you realize, someone planned this park, someone built this park, someone paid for this park, someone thought of me years and years ago before I was born, and I've grown up living and enjoying these facilities. So these are details, these are infill pieces of a long-term goal for our city, and so it's our job to do them, and I appreciate that we've pushed it to this point, and I'll be supporting it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Ruff.
Yes, I share the concern of Councilmember Pete Mott Smith and other people concerned about those issues of social equity that we discussed this evening. But tonight, we're discussing park bonds, and these park bonds have specific purposes. They are aimed to serve everyone. This is going to be facilities that everybody can share. It also addresses, as Councilmember Sterbaum said, long-stated goals of trail connectivity. I would refer also that it dovetails well with the Sustainability Action Plan that we just adopted, because it talks about transportation, connectivity, alternative transportation, biking, pedestrian, and so forth, as a way of obviating the need for road infrastructure, expanding those, which is a savings to the community, and it addresses something that's not superfluous, and that is climate change. So I think that, as the mayor said earlier, this is not a zero-sum proposition. We'll have opportunities to address those needs. He also outlined some very important directives that the city has undertaken. For instance, we've had a long-time support for social services, but we've, in the last few years, addressed affordable housing like no other administration that I've ever, in the three administrations I've served under, in increasing the housing stock by hundreds of units in the community for affordable housing. And this administration's also focused on job creation, and I think that we have, within our strategic aims, we apply that for equity considerations, whether it's transportation, whether it's our housing and neighborhood development, and various codes and so forth. So I think it was said last time, that sort of the apples and oranges, I think that was very well stated by Councilmember Sandberg, this is not an either-or proposition. Tonight, I see this as an important step forward in the strategic planning of the awards-winning Parks Department, and comes from the Parks Board, I think they have a stellar record. And it certainly doesn't mean that we're not going to address the concerns that Councilmember Pete Mott Smith has outlined, because we will address those, and we are addressing them. So tonight, I'll be voting in favor of this bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ruff.
As has been said by other councilmembers, this is consistent, this investment's consistent with so many of our goals, including what we talked about earlier tonight with the Sustainability Action Plan. As has been said, this will, should and can reduce driving, which helps us address climate change in our own small community way, can have increased public health benefits, it is potentially a mobility increase for all kinds of people, particularly people with limited means and resources to invest and spend on transportation. Makes young people more mobile and less dependent. I, we could go on and on, in that area, how it's consistent with so many of our goals for the community. And then my other reason that I'm supportive is, these are the kind of things, these are the kind of projects that I see as really contributing to the economic vitality of the community, which is one of the main reasons that we, as a community, are able to invest the way we do in social services, in helping to address, to meet the basic needs of those citizens who have the most urgent needs, and enable Bloomington to, I believe, to be, per capita, the most generous in investing in social services than any city in Indiana, per capita. And one of the main reasons we're able to do that is because projects like this make this a valuable, cool city, where property values are high, people are investing, people are excited about, and people share, and have a community spirit that's uncommon. So, you know, for those two main reasons, that I think it's good and consistent with our community goals, like, for example, the Sustainability Action Plan, and because I think this is the kind of investment that enables us to do the kind of investments that some of my other council colleagues have talked about as being our main priority, or our most urgent priority. I just don't think we can make, we are as likely to be able to make as many of those kinds of investments to benefit and assist the most needy in our community without this kind of investment that helps make our community what it is. So while I certainly understand and appreciate those arguments, this is how I see it. My biggest problem is, I generally, because I'm like Ms. Rosenbarger, one of the people who rides in the street, my biggest issue is I just have a hard time sometimes thinking we need to spend a lot of money to get people to ride their bikes on the street, because I've done it since I was a small boy, and, but I believe the folks who study transportation who say, no, there is a huge pent-up demand of people that just don't and will not feel safe riding around in traffic, just because some other people do, wearing spandex or otherwise. So that's my biggest issue. But anyway, so I'm going to enthusiastically support these.
Thank you. Oh, another one, Mr. Sims.
Thank you. I'll just piggyback on some of the things that I've heard. One of my colleagues was talking about all of the benefits, or his perceived benefits, and he goes on to say that we can go on and on and on, and I agree with that, and I share those sentiments. But we can go on and on and on, and one of the things that we're asking is our citizens to be burdened with this tax increase and paying this bill. That's one of the things that we're asking, that we're going on and on. We're asking to increase our debt load, and I understand the difference between revenue bonds and tax burden, I mean, I get all that. Debt is debt, I don't care how you look at it, it's debt, and it's going to have to be paid. I have a real issue, because I'm not a raised tax guy. I know it's hard to believe, I'm more of a fiscal conservative person, and it has to be worth it. There are many, many needs that need to be done. One of the things I think that we have to do, or I have to do, is trust some of the things that we're hearing, and I don't want that trust violated. Do I believe we can do this and still do the other things? Many of us think that we can, and I think, long-term, we probably can. Is that the highest priority? Do we want to shift funds to do other things? One of the benefits was that our property values are high. That is a benefit on this side. On the other side, they're so high that people can't afford to live here, in many cases. You see the balance, and maybe I'm just saying this wrong. That's my piece. I also see the value in what we're doing, from a connectivity standpoint, and I am hoping that if this passes, that we pretty much did all the connections for a while, that we just don't have to deal with this again, for a while. Yes, I love a beautiful city, but I also like some of the people that are in my community to have safe housing, a good employment, and able to, you know, educate their children. So, and I don't want it to get to, last week, when we were talking about this, I was talking about that. And administration says, oh, we can do it both, we could do it. I believe that, but at what cost, and what is the priority? So earlier, and I've been thinking about this all week, I've had other conversations, earlier in the day, I was asked, and oh yeah, I'm leaning towards supporting that, and I really do, because I think it's important for this community. And I'm really glad that we're voting in three different series, as opposed to all, because that'll give us more thought. This is tough. I think it's really, really tough. And I do plan to support Series A, I think, at this point, but as I said, in the future, I want us to kind of let parks and do what they do. They do a real good job, but I don't want to continue to do this with more bonding. We're talking 3.4 million bucks here, just on this, and I know most people, they go, oh, that's tax, that's city government, that's a lot of money. And when you add them all up, we're talking 10.2 million bucks. What could we do with that, as a community? That was a rhetorical question, and one has to respond. I just want you to think about that, and I think that's all I have to say. I do support and like everything that we're hearing, but I have to think about the cost of burden, and the effect on many other parts of our community, that I think, they're all nice, but I know a lot of folks that don't walk these trails, they don't go to beeline, they don't do these things. You know, they don't ride bikes. We'll all be a part of it, but, community benefit, I think is one of the terms that we talk about a lot. What is the benefit to the community? And I think that's kind of going to be the gist of some of the debate we have tonight, community benefit. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Ruff.
Just a quick follow-up, because I'm certainly intrigued by how Councilmember Sims comments, and I think that it's true, that one has to be careful about issuing debt, but, you know, I like to distinguish between self-liquidating debt and debt that's non-liquidating. That is, that if, you know, if we have self-liquidating debt, that is, that it is, represents an investment for the community, it pays dividends back in terms of economic activity, in terms of quality of life, then it's seen as an investment, so it actually pays for itself over time. I mean, if we were to issue debt just simply for consumption, non-self-liquidating, that would be problematic. But this, I think, is, you know, a good, I see it as a good investment for the community, for everyone in the community, because quite a number of people will use it. Those that don't use it should benefit in the sense that if people do are using it, then it obvious the need to drive, that is, it obvious the need to build further roads. If people are taking trails or alternative transportation, it means this multimodal system of transportation is a way in which we save money as a community ultimately, and I think that is a very wise strategic investment for the future, especially facing climate change, especially facing challenges with liquid fuel production in the future. So I see this as money well spent. Thanks.
Thank you, I'm just going to jump in here. I know we have a great Parks Department, I use Parks facilities quite a bit. I know how important this focus on amenities is to impacting our quality of life. But I liked what Ms. Crabtree said about not either/or, but which first, and looking at our total debt obligation of over $98 million, and adding another 10.265 to that, and then I'm sure we're going to have something come up with the old hospital site in a few years, it just, it gives me pause. And I know Ms. McDevitt has talked about the surveys that we do for parks, and how the trails are very important, and I believe that, but nobody has talked about the city survey, that just the general survey that we did, and the focus on homelessness was, I think, up there in the top couple of issues that we need to focus on. And I know the city puts a lot of effort, I know people on this council are very committed to social issues, and I'm proud of that, but I think that we can, so one more thing, we're also putting a lot of energy into Switch Yard Park. I mean, talk about a cherry on top. Switch Yard Park is going to, I mean, that's going to be fantastic for the community. And we're working on that already. There are things that I like about what the plans are for Resolution 18-21, but I guess I feel like I can't do another tax burden bond for this, right now. I'm torn about it, I am conflicted, I will be passing on it. I think it's okay that we have these big ideas about our parks, I think it's very important, but I also look at Switch Yard, it's more than a big idea, it's a huge idea. Let's focus on that for a while, and also spend some of our time and energy, not just the social services committees, but the city administration, looking at what's out there, what are the services out there? How can we work together with organizations that are already providing these much-needed services? How can we facilitate the development of housing, not just affordable? I mean, we need, I'm just boggled, what we need, we have a lack of diversity of housing. We need condos for, you know, young couples, or people just starting out, or somebody like me who doesn't want a lot of space. We need a diversity of housing, and I think that that is an investment in the future. If people have a place to live, for me, that's, you know, and while we're working on that, we can work on other Parks issues, but I'm not sure that I can move forward on this at this particular time. Thank you.
Call the question.
Did you have another comment?
I did.
Sure. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, I was waiting to see if anybody who hadn't commented yet wanted to comment, but since Councilmember Ruff has taken a second bite of the apple, I will also do We give $300,000 in social service funding every year. We're being asked for these two projects to give over $3 million. That disproportionality just doesn't match my values. Furthermore, Councilmember Ruff talked about economic development, this is part of economic development. If you look at these two specific projects, making If you look at these two specific projects, making it more comfortable to bike and walk on Seventh Street, and having a trail go through where there's no development from... Well, where there's anything, there's a little bit of residential development on the West End, and then going to Rogers Street. I don't see anybody using that, like, for commuting, or as incentive to build a village center, or to build an employment center. Just that location is not one for economic development, in my view. As Councilmember Granger pointed out, the city is spending $34 million on Switch Yard Park. That is your massive economic development. And that's good. I think it'll be a good thing for the community. I do worry about gentrification, but that's a huge investment. So, for economic development, these two projects, I don't see it. What a truly innovative, inspiring celebration of our bicentennial would be, is to lift up the people that have not felt the benefits, and the wonder, and the beauty of being, of living in Bloomington. To lift those people up, and to help them to be self-sufficient for the future. That would be a really inspiring, innovative, wonderful leadership position for, to celebrate our bicentennial. But not this. I understand why Mayor Hamilton is bringing this, and why the administration is bringing this, because our Parks Department is wonderful. We know they can do it. They've done it before. It's great. You know, he doesn't have to worry about it anymore. And I'm not the mayor, I can't pretend to say, "Well, I would do this and this," because I know being a mayor is very difficult. You only have so many hours in the day. You only have so much political capital. I understand that. But to me, this is not the way to celebrate our bicentennial. We really, you know, all year long, and I, you know, I'm wearing the pin, I'm proud, born and raised Bloomington. All year long, we'd be like, "Oh, Bloomington's so wonderful, and it's a gem, and, you know, we're also an exception to police brutality, and to racism, and, you know, we're this wonderful oasis. Yay." It's not that way for a lot of people who live here. People I see every day, because I live right near a friend's place. People who are struggling. And so, a real enlightened and enlightening investment in our future would be to help them, rather than to further shine up the beauty of the parks that we have, and put more icing on the cake of our park system. So, I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volan.
I was going to say these comments for 1822, but hearing the second comments from some of my colleagues, I thought they were appropriate now. First thing I'll say is, Councilmember Rallo said we're here to adjust park bonds. No, we're not. The Parks Board hears parks' bonds, and their job is to think about parks' bonds. The Plan Commission hears, decides whether something meets the terms of the UDO and the Comprehensive Plan. But at the common council, we have to consider everything. The idea is that the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. So, the idea that we have to think about non-parks things later, I think is not true, that we should be thinking holistically about equity, even when we're talking about parks' bonds. Secondly, Councilmember Sterbaum said that developers can't, that can't build public infrastructure. Yes, they can. I mean, right now, one of the commitments in the Century Village PUD, if it goes through, is they're going to improve and add sidewalk well-off premises that goes towards the center of town. You can look at the neighborhood like Green Acres, which had, there was, back when it was developed, there was no law that required the developer to put sidewalks in or infrastructure, and we've been catching up ever since. It was just a couple of years ago that we managed to put sidewalks all the way out on East Third Street, out to that, you know, out towards College Mall. Took us forever to pick up that in arrears. Developers can be made to add public infrastructure, even some that's off-site. We can ask them to help us build the city. Doesn't have to be just us. But I think, you know, the issue here isn't, should we do either/or? It's, what is the ratio of money we're putting into one type of thing versus another? How much money have we gotten from developers, have been put, has been put by the city itself into the Affordable Housing Fund? Is it about $2 million, give or take, half a million? Meanwhile, we've spent $34 million, was it, on Switch Yard Park? We're asking for $10 million here. And by the way, this $10 million, at 4.5% is 15, 15.5. At 6% it's 17.5. Okay, I just did a quick loan calculation. It's rough. It's about half a million dollars off. But still, we're talking about every single thing that we pay for by bonding. There's an interest cost to it. We're spending a substantial amount of money on these projects. So, you know, and let alone, as everyone knows, that I'm not pleased about the $30 million being asked for for two garages, because, first of all, we shouldn't be thinking about them in isolation. It's not garages just today and parks over here. We're trying to think about things in toto, and that's why this body is here. Lastly, I'll say that, has anyone done a car count at the Crawford Homes? How many people at Crawford 1 and 2 own a car? You're going to find that the answer is less than five, that everybody there has a bike, that homeless people ride bikes. If a project like this can make it easier for people to get around, I mean, high comfort does not necessarily mean high income. High comfort means it's a high comfort to get out of your car and do something else, and to get, go by a different mode. I rode a scooter yesterday for the first time. I did look ridiculous. I'm not sure which one is more ridiculous, me wearing this, or me riding the scooter. But it was not high comfort for me. I'm actually too tall for a scooter, and I was afraid of falling over, being hit in the street. If there was a dedicated bike lane, I would find riding the scooter more comfortable. So, you know, we're balancing many different interests here. I support the Seventh Street Greenway. I'm iffy on the RCA Power Line Trail. The only other two things I really support in the three bonds are the trees and the alley repair. I could have been happy, if we had taken the Seventh Street Greenway, the trees and the alley repair, and put them in one bond, I would have voted for that one without hesitation. The others, I have to question, and I will be questioning 1822. I support this one. It's a toss-up, but overall, I think that it's greater benefit, and it provides more than just recreational facilities. It provides commuting facilities. We need that to reduce our dependence on automobiles. Thank you.
Thank you. We had the question called in second. Would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 18-21?
Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Sims?
No.
Rallo?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Granger?
No.
530.
That passes 530.
Madam Chair, I move that Resolution 1822 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would the clerk please read?
Resolution 1822, approving the issuance of City of Bloomington, Indiana Park District Bonds Series 2018B, in an amount not to exceed $3,865,000 to finance the cost of capital improvements at certain park facilities, and costs incurred in connection with the issuance of such bonds. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution takes one of the statutory steps necessary to improve the issuance of bonds by the City of Bloomington Parks District under Indiana Code 3610435 and 61.11720.5, in order to finance certain capital improvements at facilities operated by the City of Bloomington Parks Department, including the design, acquisition, and construction of 1, trails at Griffey Lake, 2, a trail from Clubhouse Drive to College Avenue at Cascades Park, and 3, all-related incidental expenses incurred in connection therewith, and the cost of selling and issuing these bonds. Your committee recommendation is 323.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that Resolution 1822 be adopted.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, do you want, oh, you want to? Okay.
I just want to have Bruce Donaldson come up from Barnes and Thornburg, and just to clarify uses of funds, as you've talked about tonight, and what the use of funds that we're talking about tonight could be used for, in your discussions about funding other activities, whether that's possible with these funds. I just wanted to clarify that for you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening. Bruce Donaldson with Barnes and Thornburg. And I think several of you have alluded to this, and I think you know this, maybe for the benefit of the public, this, this particular funding mechanism under the park statute is only for parks' projects. So, it's not like there's $10 million sitting here, and you have to decide where to spend that $10 million. And again, I think several of you have alluded to that. This particular funding mechanism can only be used for park projects, not for the other types of things that have been discussed. So, just from a legal standpoint, I wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, do you want to come up and tell us about this part? Thank you.
Certainly. Griffey Lake Loop Hiking Trail has been a long advocated facility around an increasingly popular natural property, as well as increasingly popular urban park. It does not exist today. There are numerous miles of hiking trails, none of which circumvent the entire lake property. So, this has been a long requested facility improvement at the park.
I'm sorry, can you please turn it off, or something that I can't hear?
Yeah, I'm sorry, certainly. The project would entail a route around the lake. There will certainly be some challenges with existing dam and spillway infrastructure on the south, I'm sorry, on the west side of the lake. We look at this project as being a hiking trail, and would include some volunteer efforts to construct, as well as some substantial engineered structures in the vein of boardwalks and walkways and bridges, to navigate over some very steep ravines and some severe topography around the property. It's estimated conceptually at 3.6 miles in length, and with a construction cost, or a project cost of 1.25 million. Lower Cascades Park Trail, you may be familiar that we have constructed several phases of the Cascades Park Trail system to date, the first being from Clubhouse Drive and Old State Road 37, or also known as Lower Cascades Park Road North, crossing Walnut Street to Stone Mill Road. A second phase that went from Clubhouse Drive up around the monastery, the former monastery, up around the Cascades Golf Course, terminating at Kinzer Pike. A third phase was completed in conjunction with the Public Works Department for a realignment of North Dunn Street and Old State Road 37, which extended the trail system from Stone Mill Road to the unoccupied City Utilities Water Treatment Plant. A fourth phase has been completed in design, which would extend the trail along the Pine Golf Course holes at the Cascades Golf Course, going west towards Bloomington North High School, and then north towards the Rosewood subdivision. And the final phase is arguably the most difficult, but would connect the park and all the installations that I just mentioned, to Miller Showers Park. And this would be an on-road, one-way option, routes and directions to be determined, from Clubhouse Drive, south through the main park property, aligning and connecting with Miller Showers Park. There are some auxiliary features that we would like to include in this project, addressing the condition of the drive-through stream parking area at the Waterfall Shelter, some creek erosion between the two shelter houses on the west side of the creek, a road bridge on the south end of the property. And I believe those are the issues that would be addressed in that facility. This project length is estimated at 1.2 miles, and has a construction allocation cost of $2.1 million. Is that the last one in that series, I believe?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from my colleagues? Mr. Volan?
Yes. The point made by the bond attorney about, you know, that this money can only be used for parks' projects, yes, but does that not increase our overall indebtedness as a city? Doesn't it limit how much total bonding we can do overall?
It does increase the amount of bonds outstanding. It does not limit. If you'll remember, last Wednesday, when I spoke about this, the parks in Indiana, parks' departments can be enacted under one of two statutes. The statute that our Parks Board and Parks Department was established under does not have a constitutional debt limit. In addition, they can operate further outside the corporate limits, but it's the more, allows more under that statute. So, whereas the city has a constitutional debt limit on property tax debt of 2%, the Parks Department does not. So, it would not, doesn't impact the city's ability to issue other debt.
So, what's to stop some more irresponsible city not named Bloomington from issuing jillions of dollars in parks' debt, because there's no limit? I mean, how, how does the state reconcile that?
There are remonstrance issues with large debts of over $5 million in a series, so they would be precluded from that, as well as what, you know, a community can afford from a property tax perspective, you know, people. And they could go to the Parks Board. We had a public hearing. They could come to the, that could have come to that public hearing and spoke against that, and it was duly advertised. So, there are avenues for the public to disapprove of the issuance of parks' debt under this statute.
Well, no, I mean, that's fine. I'm just trying to understand, like, how is it that our overall indebtedness and bond rating is not affected by, would not be affected by, I mean, what if we did 10 $3 million parks' bonds now, instead of three tonight?
At some point, yeah. We, you know, you can issue enough debt that it would impact your rating, because the rating agencies would come back and say, "That's more debt than your community is going to stand up for, and we're going to knock you down on your ratings." You could still issue the debt, but as your ratings go down, your interest rates go up, and you're over all debt. So, that's, that's the issue. We have a very strong debt rating. We're AA minus, and on the cuffs of moving actually up to a AA rating. So, obviously, the rating agencies think that our economy is strong, that our ability to repay the debt is strong, and that we've not overly issued too much debt per capita, and that we are a low-tax-rate community, and that we are fiscally conservative with the reserves that we have on hand. So, we get rewarded for all of those things. So, yes, there at some point, you know, if we came and said, "We want to issue $300 million of debt," that could have a negative impact.
But just to be clear, to make sure I fully understand this, you're saying that, I mean, I used to be under the impression that we had a ceiling, that we could issue, that we could only issue so much debt as a city. I mean, how close are we to reaching that cap?
The only constitutional limit that we have as a city is on civil-city property tax debt, and it's got a 2% cap of the AV. And we have, we, when we renewed our general obligation bond, the city only has one general obligation bond, and we just renewed that two years ago, at about $8 million. We didn't ask to increase it up to the maximum bonding authority for that. We, at the same time, renewed a $12 million general obligation debt for the Parks Department. So, in this case, the Parks Department would have two general obligation property tax-based debts. Their other two bonds are revenue-based. So, we're restricted in property tax debt of 2%. We're not restricted in revenue-based debt, except that rating agencies and underwriters require what we call coverage. And that means they say...
Covenants?
They, coverage.
Cover.
Annual bond coverage. And what they ask is a minimum of 1.25 to 1.5, and the higher that you go in coverage for that particular revenue stream, the better your debt gets rated, and the lower the interest rate. Again, we've always had very good coverage in the debts that we've issued that are not, that are revenue-based. So, there are things that impact our ability to issue debt. And what I'm telling you is that, one, we're a low-debt community. We have a high bond rating. We have a strong... economy, so that, and we have a low tax rate community. The rating agencies and underwriters and the people that, and there's high demand for Bloomington and Indiana bonds. We never have a problem selling our debt.
Okay, so just last question is, how much general obligation debt does the city currently have?
Eight million. All we have is eight million. The Parks Department has 12. That's the, we have 20 million in general obligation.
And the whole city, not just parks?
Right. 12 million, 20 million between the two of us.
Thank you.
Mr. Sterbaum?
Yeah, this is from Mr. Williams. I know you're planning a trail back to the falls. Is this part of that project or is that independent of this project?
It is independent, and that is funded by the general obligation parks bond, which has already been issued.
Right. So that's, that's in the, in the works?
Yes.
Right. And can you describe that trail around the lake a little bit? Is that going to be easier for less able, less nimble people to get around the lake?
I think we would try to follow a state park model, that there would be some various vigorous, rugged sections of the trail that would be more difficult and challenging, but some shorter loop trails could be constructed that would be kind of the introductory trails around the lake. We've, all this illustrates is a conceptual route around the complete lake as a whole, which has been, what has been most frequently requested.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Piedmont Smith.
If I could, Commissioner, Councilor Sterbaum, in addition to this, a project that was funded earlier, to your question, at Griffey is an accessible fishing pier that will be along, that, so that we can have people of limited mobility be able to access the lake, fish off the pier. So that's a project that's already been funded and is in the works as well.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Underwood, I think you explained this last week, but I don't have it in my notes. Why are the parks' bicentennial bonds split up into three?
You're allowed to have a series of $5 million or less and be sold as a combination, and there's more flexibility in doing that in a series than combined.
There's, so there's more flexibility in selling the bonds?
Yes.
In your response to Councilmember Volan earlier, you mentioned something about if a bond is over $5 million, there's a remonstrance process?
There's a public remonstrance period, yes, process as well.
So was that one of the considerations for making them less than $5 million?
Yes, that was one of the considerations.
So was there a concern about a possible remonstrance if you were to bundle these differently or altogether?
No, there was not.
There was not a concern that there would be a remonstrance, and yet, the possibility of a remonstrance was factored into your decision to break them up?
It also allows for these to be discussed at, in series rather than combined. So some of the comments we've heard tonight is that some of these you support and some of you don't. If we bundled all these together, you have less flexibility in the discussion and the approval of those. So that was the main concern in talking to the Parks Board and talking, and bringing forward to you. If you'll remember, we did the same series process with our last general fund debts. It gave you more flexibility as well as the bodies that approved them to discuss moving those forward. So flexibility was the main thing.
Was, did your office or the administration ever consider consulting with the council as to how to break these up into three?
It was discussed with the administration, yes.
But did you ever think to reach out to the city council?
I personally know. I work for the mayor, and those decisions are made in the mayor's office.
Okay. I also have a question for Mr. Williams, but I can wait.
Let's just see if anybody else has questions. Mr. Rallo?
Yes, Ms. McDevitt, I was, you would refer earlier to, I know that there's been a long history of planning a trail like this. I think that, as you referred to before, that there was, and Mr. Coyne referred to, that the public has responded in the form of surveys consistently asking for trail infrastructure. Is this part of the infrastructure that they've requested in the past, and is that why it's such a high priority, priority for the parks?
In our both civic and survey, and also the city survey, we did ask questions about, you know, trails and the conditions and that, and it was just an overall interest in the trails. However, we have received direct feedback from a lot of our Griffey users out there. We, it's just increasingly become more and more popular over the past couple of years. A lot of users and staff frequently get that feedback from people, wouldn't it be nice? And they're trying to find their own way to, to make a loop trail around the lake. So based on that feedback, earlier this year, we did meet with some trail users, we did have a public meeting, our Environmental Resource Advisory Council had a planning meeting with trail users specifically on the Griffey Loop Trail, and this is what came out of that meeting.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandberg.
Thank you. I'd like to pose a hypothetical here with Mr. Underwood, because I, and I'm sure the majority of us up here are no less concerned about social equity and the needs of low-income individuals in our community. Let's say we were able to somehow come up with another bond. We all know that this money is not fungible. It can't be taken from parks and given to other clearly pressing issues. But if we were to say, get a large amount of money, let's say 3 million, we wanted to get bonding for 3 million for projects, like, let's give it to an appropriate entity that has the healthcare ability to run a detox center, or let's build a year-round homeless shelter that then another entity could manage, or let's spend it on a major affordable housing project rather than go about the current mechanisms that we're going. What department would have the ability to do that? Would that be Hand? Would that be Economic and Sustainable Development? Would that be a mayor's initiative itself? I mean, how would it work to get this kind of money that seems to be discussed here as, as a priority which all of us would agree with and certainly have empathy for? What bonding mechanism exists for us to be able to put that kind of money on the table?
There's, there's, I'm going to bifurcate your question. There is the, the legal issue of what the city can spend bond funds on, and I'll let Mr. Donaldson address that. The funding mechanism could be, assuming that it's not bonds, and I'll, I'll let him address that, then it would be the dedication of, of string of revenues that would be proposed by the administration to say, we're going to dedicate funding of X per year. So Jack Hopkins is, is an example of that, of so much money per year is dedicated towards that. So that's one way that that can happen. Typically with bonds, you're, you're financing a long-term capital asset. And we, and we have, the city has done that with bond funds, many of which, you know, we, I've talked before, we typically consider an investment from a bond to be a life of 15 years to 50 or 60 or 75 years. There's not many structures around Bloomington that are more than 75 years old, and, and, you know, we're, we're setting in one of them. So it's typically an investment in a capital asset.
Okay.
Trails, parks departments, buildings of those types. We have had examples, we just cut the ribbon on the mill today. That is a city-owned building. We are, have an agreement from the, between the RDC and Dimension Mill, Inc., to run that facility.
So more physical assets and not services?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything more to add? All right, thank you. That's helpful. Thank you, Mr. Volan.
Yes. Isn't it true that the city owns the old city hall that was built in 1915 that houses the John Walton Arts Center? Doesn't the city own that building even though it's been-
I believe we sold that one for a dollar.
No, no, I mean, has it been sold and given to them, or does it still remain in the city's?
I don't believe that's a city asset anymore.
Okay. How about the Buzzkirk Chumley Theater?
That is a city asset.
Okay. The, the fire station number one, the fire station number two that were given to not-for-profits, does the city not have any right to reclaim those if those organizations abandoned those buildings?
I would, I, I'm not privy to the exact wording of what those, how those were trans, conveyed.
Mr. Wayne Haslam?
So just based on previous experience with the city, when the fire station on Roger Street was-
Conveyed.
For Lotus was, was dedicated to Lotus, there is reversion language in that agreement that says if it's not used by Lotus as an arts and educational facility, it would revert back to the city of Bloomington.
Thank you, yeah, that helps. So overall, the point I'm trying to make is that we have taken city assets and devoted them to other issues, and those assets were built, I'm sure some of them were built by bonds, the Buzzkirk Chumley wasn't built by a city bond, but, you know, we have a precedent for this. Are, are we saying that we can't devote capital assets to a function that is other than parks or economic development? Is that ruled out?
To clarify, on this particular issues, these could only be used for-
For parks.
Parks funds.
Understood, but I mean, we can do-
Obviously, the city has either bought assets, bought, built and bonded for assets that are now be, now being utilized for a different purpose.
For non-parks purposes, for non-parks purposes, yeah.
Right, yeah. So they're either economical development, they're so, you know, a social issue, the Buzzkirk Chumley is, you know, an asset that we took over. And, and we own, and we would have, we have to continue to maintain that building per an agreement with the Buzzkirk Chumley Management Group, so we have different obligations there. The point was, we can't sell a bond and dedicate it to a social service activity-
If it's parks. Yeah.
Any kind of debt. We couldn't say, we're going to, we're going to sell a $10 million debt to fund the operation of a-
Not asking that, understood. I'm asking, could we build a Crawford III with city debt? Could we build a Crawford Homes III with city debt?
So, yeah, I think we could.
That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking whether we should operate it with, with dollars. Simply can we build the, the building?
Now, there, there is restrictions through, if it was built with RDC funds, is that we, we cannot own and manage those. There was a court case-
That's understandable.
Yeah, I just want to say, there's, there's, there's not a pat answer. It depends on the, the source of the funds that are utilized either as a revenue stream or to fund a bond obligation on the uses of that.
But I mean, we are not, we are not operating Crawford I and II as a different entity, not the city, right?
Right.
We've helped them, but we could build them a building that they would operate. Is that not true?
If the, the funds used to repay the debt would allow for that, yes.
Okay, so they were talking about general obligation bonds that are not specifically for parks, we're talking, the city as a whole takes on this debt.
I believe in, that we could use general obligation property tax debt to build that.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on Councilmember Sandberg's question. So if we were to bond for a building for affordable housing, where would, who would initiate that?
The administration.
And it would go through which body or bodies?
If it's a general obligation debt, I believe it would come directly to you all. I don't think that we had to go through any other body. Now that the, the award of the con, you know, the, the use of the funds would go through the Public Works Department, the Public Works Board.
So would the Board of Public Works be the one to initiate the bond?
I don't believe they have to. No, the administration could come to the, could propose legislation directly to the council to issue a general obligation debt.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for Mr. Williams also about the Griffey Lake Trail. In our packet, it says that the boardwalk for $1.5 million is not, sorry, let me rephrase that. The additional cost of $1.5 million for a boardwalk along the causeway is not included in the bicentennial bond, is that right?
That is correct.
So is there a foreseen funding source for that, or that's just wait and see?
Well, as Mr. Underwood indicated, we have a general obligation bond funding to construct an accessible fishing pier with additional funds that we hope to extend to the Northshore Trail or the Northshore Loop of Lake Griffey. That will leave us only the southern end along the causeway, so clearly, there are going to need to have future additional funds to connect the loop along the causeway, which is something that we would have to work with county government on as well.
Okay, so that, so that, funding for that southern portion has not been identified yet?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no more questions, let's go to the public for comment on Resolution 18-22. Step to the microphone, please, sign in, state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Malcolm Dauglish, and I am, have been a lover of Griffey Lake Wilderness, the wilds around there for over 30 years, and it's been sort of a, I guess, a church, a refuge for our family, and I've noticed it's a growing place for other people in our city as, as such. It, the parts that I enjoy about it don't require a lot of money, but there, there are some ways, and I wrote a little quick thing here that I could read about Griffey Lake and how I value it, so take it for what it is. Griffey Woods is a wild, 2,000-acre gem of nature on our doorstep. I'm not saying just the city's, but the IU RTP Research and Teaching Preserve as well, public lands, I'm, I'm speaking of all of that part. In many ways, it's better and more accessible than the Knob Zone Trail, the Deem Wilderness Pate Hollow Trail, all of which I've hiked. I spent last fall hiking and mapping about, about 200 miles through the Griffey Preserve, the Griffey Wilderness Area. On some level, we all deserve, we all derive immense pleasure from the patterns we find in the wilds. We admire their beauty and study their ecology. Our engagement with nature requires both immersion and equal opportunity if our community is to find a truly sustainable relationship with nature, with our natural world. I'm a musician who relies on walks in the woods to create, and out of those walks in the woods, I have performed and do perform annual fundraisers for Middleway House and have done so for many, many, almost 20 years or so for the Super Bowl benefit. So I'm, I'm really engaged in that side of, of our, our city. I am not alone in, in this inspiration that nature gives, and it's a form of medicine. Aside from the fitness factors which are obvious from walking in the woods, walking in the woods boosts immunity, mood, reduces stress, and there's so many stress-related health impacts that are hitting our society. Most of our evolutionary, it, it reduces blood pressure, most of our evolutionary history was spent in wild environments without buildings and walls. It's a comforting place. By engaging our spiritual, artistic, scientific selves with Griffey, we are offered an exceptional opportunity to fall back in love with nature. A trail, and it's not necessarily an expensive endeavor. I've done it on a teacher's salary all my life, and that was when teachers were- I've done it on a teacher's salary all my life, and that was when teachers were getting $10,000 a year. So, a trail in the woods is a long garden, a way into the universe, an ever-changing sky above with limbs and leaves and dappled light. As Wendell Berry says, "We come into a, into the peace of wild things." So, the idea that I have for a circumferential trail, which is not exactly just around the lake, so bear with me while I give that vision. A wonderfully immersive potential yet to be designed into the Griffey Experience is a fifteen-to-twenty mile circumferential trail that would link and improve on existing trails, balancing accessibility with minimal impact to sensitive areas. The city and university seem quite ready to seize this potential. With joint efforts, a trail along the many fingered ridge lines, there's basically three, if you look up there, there's three, uh, feeders that go into the lake, and each one of those feeders has ridge lines, uh, that are, are just extremely beautiful and, and capable of having a, a trail that, that goes around through them. With joint efforts, a trail along the many fingered ridge lines and lake viewpoints that descend into the basin and feeder creek bottom lands is possible. This would provide the opportunity for a day-long loop hike, although shorter hikes would be possible due to multiple existing trails, uh, trailheads along the way. The building of the trail could reach out and employ at-risk youth to provide an experience in nature for a population that doesn't often access the woods. The trail should be designed with input from diverse communities in our, in our city, African-American, Asian, Latino, immigrant, all ages, uh, grade school, high school, college, kids that are picking up cups after the fu, uh, the 500, uh, out on, uh, Highway 37, could be transformed by an experience where they're building trails with kids and, and elders in our community. It's, it's an invitation that we could seize upon, uh, to ensure that, uh, okay, so, the design would allow for a range of experiences from contemplative solitude to communal merrymaking, and that's just depends on which ethnicity has what tradition to enjoy those woods. Um, and, uh, we are poised now at, at this bicentennial year to be able to have a crowdsourced trail designed, coordinated, uh, with the IU RTP, the City of Bloomington Parks and Recreation, the IU Health Hospital, which is on the borders of that, uh, the golf course that's being redesigned, Meadowwood, link with, linkage to, with other trails. It's a rare, a very rare confluence in at least the thirty-year history that I've had with this city. And it's a design like the Beeline Trail, the farmer's market, that begets a love of place and, and just a, 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 a type of civility that, that we, we cherish in our town. So, if there's any questions about any of that, I'd be happy to, um, address them. I think it's food, I think it's food, I don't think it's icing.
Thank you very much, additional comment? Seeing none, I'll come back to my colleagues for a final comment. Ms. Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I think, uh, my comments, uh, on the previous resolution hold for this one. Um, even more because, uh, in the previous resolution, there was the Seventh Street Greenway, which, uh, I support, supported to an extent, but, um, this one really is, uh, you know, Griffey is wonderful, and I, I hope more people can experience it, but it's already wonderful. I don't think we need another 1.25 million dollar investment, um, to, uh, make it a great place, because it already is. Um, so anyway, these are, these are both, uh, trail projects, which, um, I don't think are as important as some of the other needs in our community. I understand and understood from the beginning that these are parks bonds, and we can't just take the money and give it to the poor, so, uh, believe me, I, I know that full well. Um, and I also know that, that bonds are not something you can take out in order to run a soup kitchen. Uh, so, I'm not that naive, um, I am somewhat idealistic that we can, uh, do more with this incre, with, with an equivalent increase in property tax, um, through a bond that would provide infrastructure to meet the needs of the less fortunate, and that's what I would prefer to do. I'm gonna vote no on this one, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rollow?
Yes, um, I, I guess I'll state again, I, I, I don't believe in this false dichotomy of either or, that we can't have, we can't have housing for low-income people, and we, and we also can't have trails at Griffey. I think we can have both, and in fact, I, I know we can have both. I also think that there's this sort of, um, idea that there is an equivalency between our investments, and I think that's false too. I think that if we were to build a new Crof, say a Crawford II facility, which houses, has thirty-six units, that costs 7.4 million dollars for thirty-six units. Keep in mind that this administration has leveraged low-income housing in this community numbering in the hundreds. So, and the $300,000 a year that we commit to, to social service funding through Jack Hopkins, that's every year, this is a one-time investment. So it's false to say, we're spending 1.2 million dollars and we only spend $300,000 a year, but we spend over ten years, actually, the duration of this bond, it'll be far more than, uh, than 1.5, it'll be, or 1.25, it'll be 3 million or, or 5 million dollars that we, that we'll have spent on social service funding. So, you know, I, I think that, um, I think we're all on together in terms of the needs of this community, but I, but I, I feel we're talking past each other, and I just want to set terms of agreement, and I think we can agree on, I hope we can agree on the fact that we're committed to both types of investment in this community. Regarding this trail, this, this is one that, I've hiked Griffey since I was a three-year-old, because I used to visit this community, and my, my aunt and uncle lived on Brown Cliff, and they took me there when I was very young, and I remember that, and it's always been precious to me. I've lived here for thirty-five years, and this has been a priority for a very long time. And you, one can tell that it's a priority because people do a loop anyway, and they do a lot of ecological damage by walking through the forest. This will prevent that kind of ecological damage by having, having a designated trail, that's the value. It's not just that Griffey is there, and it's always been there, and why do we need a trail? It actually serves the purpose of limiting the type of damage that, we want erosion and so forth, and trampling plants and, and that sort of thing. So I think this is a very wise investment. In terms of the idea that, uh, Mr. Doglish said of, of it's food, I think nature is sustenance. And if we're gonna expect people to value nature and protect it, and stand up to the challenges that we have of the global environmental crisis, we gotta get people into the woods, we've gotta get them into nature, particularly children who are overwired right now and looking only at their phones, I'm afraid. Uh, and a virtual experience in the woods is nothing compared to Griffey, which has, as was said, 2,000 acres of forest, it has ten community types, 564 species of plants, 157 species of birds, many of them endangered and threatened birds, um, 38 species of reptiles and amphibians, uh, third, up to 41 mammal species. I mean, it's an incredibly diverse area that's just ten minutes away, and I think that we need to facilitate this, and this is a good investment for everyone in the community, regardless of income types. They can come there and they can enjoy Griffey. So I think this is a very wise investment, it's backed up by the consistent surveys that say, we want more trails in this community, and so I, I will absolutely support this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volan?
Thanks. I don't think that it's a matter of either or, it's just that there's not being a, there's not a plan being presented for the or, it's just the either. Uh, where is the plan for, you know, a token amount, another, a fourth $3 million bond that would build a building somewhere, that would add the social leg to the economic development leg and the environmental leg that the administration has proposed? You know, we can't do anything like this without the tax base of people living in close proximity. If we were in the middle of Brown County and we wanted to build this trail, we might have a harder time finding the funding to do it. Uh, it might take state funding to do it. We're doing this with local tax dollars from people who live south of this area, eh, you know, on streets and grids, they're urban. None, no one here, with, with few exceptions, no one in the city lives off the land. That's sort of the antithesis of the urban, it's rural, people who live off the land. So, this is an urban project we're talking about, and as important as nature is, we wouldn't be able to have this conversation about nature and how much we need nature if we weren't sitting in a city hall, if we weren't talking about it on, in an urban context. They need each other. Uh, one of the impacts of this, of, of this particular loop is that it's going to induce traffic. More people are going to come here as a result. If I start hearing people complaining that there's too many people going on Lake Griffey now because of the trail, I'll chuckle a little bit, alright? I certainly, that's not a reason to oppose it. Uh, but, you know, this investment is indirect economic development at best, and I don't want to be the person who, all he sees is economic development. We're trying to see everything, sustainability is economic and environmental and social, and there's a great case being made here for the environmental and social benefits of this, and that it will even make our community stronger indirectly, you know, economically. But, the mayor didn't call these the bicentennial parks bonds, he called them the bicentennial bonds. They happen to be parks bonds, alright? Where is the mayor's explicit, uh, commitment bicentennial-wise to the social aspect of sustainability? Something, they could have brought something forward to say, we are thinking about this too, we're planning to invest capital dollars for something like Councilmember Piedmont Smith has said. We do have 30 million dollars of garages being proposed, 10 million dollars of parks bonds, 34 million dollars of the switchyard bond. Uh, why can't there be 3 to 5 million dollars of pure social capital infrastructure investment? Uh, this is why I'm, I'm puzzled here, it's not that I'm against this. I continue to say, I admire the Parks Department, I want to support everything the Parks Department does. We're talking about something a little bit bigger. In addition to that, there ought to be this other thing. If I have to vote against this in order to get the administration to come back with this and a few million dollars for social capital investment, then that's what I have to do, not because I oppose the quality of the work, the importance of it psychically to the community, it's that, it's not the only thing we should be thinking about. I, I, I would urge us to stop trying to silo these problems. Here's, we need nature, we need housing, we need economic development. We don't have to pick one, we should be thinking about all of them together. I'm gonna have a hard time supporting this right now, I want to support it, but I need to see more that's unrelated to this, thank you.
If I could interrupt for just a second to add some additional things as, as I've thought through this, I would like to say that the mayor has committed a million and a half dollars to the housing fund in addition to 2 million dollars to a community development financial institution specifically for affordable housing. That's three and a half million dollars, and to leverage other public funds and private funds to increase those dollars for affordable housing, so, I just want to offer that, that there are other efforts ongoing to raise funds for those types of issues.
How much, how much of those dollars came from developments?
A million and a half came, a million dollars-
Point of order, please. Everybody who speaks needs to first be recognized by the chair. And we're actually in the council comment period.
And I actually would like to focus on the resolution at hand, which is Resolution 18-22.
Madam Chair, I think that what Mr. Underwood, however out of order he may have been, is saying is relevant, and I would like to direct a question towards him and let him continue.
Fine.
Mr. Underwood?
Of the three and a half million dollars that I just identified, 1 million came from developers, uh, the rest is, um, governmental funds. Uh, we had a half a million dollars at the community foundation that was public, uh, was local income tax dollars. Uh, the other 2 million is a million dollars from the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Zone and from a million dollars from the Redevelopment Commission, so, 2 and a half million dollars of public funds.
But nothing, no general obligation bonds?
Not at, no, not at this point.
Okay, well, just to finish my point then, uh, we, could we not do more? Could we not do more with general obligation tax dollars? The answer is yes. I don't see any other answer besides that. The administration could add some more to that. Again, I'm not opposed to any particular project, I've always admired the work that's been done, but we could do, have done something more, I think we should, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sterbum?
Yeah, this discussion's clearly building some political will to do something else and to do something in the Social Services Department with a bond, but we're here to talk about parks and what we're doing in parks, and, you know, these are both really important improvements to two assets of the city. Lower Cascades was the first park in the City of Bloomington, it's been maintained over time and improved, and this is an asset that we're improving. I think we're, this is a false, kind of an ambush to throw this project of, let's do something else with this money. We're here to talk about these specific bonds for these parks. I think another day, we can do this other work, but I am not stopping this work because this is well thought out, these are long-planned improvements to the parks, and I'm just gonna support them. I want to work on these other social issues another day. I've spent a lot of my time working on social issues over time, and I want to continue doing that, but, um, let's fix these parks and let's also do the other work.
Thank you, Mr. Sims?
Thank you. I will support 18-22 in a plan, and I know I'm getting ahead, but 18-23 as well. Coming in tonight, th- there's three different series, and many times, you're just not gonna get everything you want, in particularly when we're talking about using other people's dollars, tax dollars, so, I, I have an aversion to debt. To me, 6.8 million from an obligation bond, tax burden bond, is better than 10.2 from a debt load, and then that still leaves, not the same fund, but still some flexibility in doing some of the other things that we're talking about. Prioritizing the three projects, actually, these next two we're talking about, I think, is a higher priority. It's not less important, but in my mind, a higher priority than the first one we're talking about, the Seventh Street, um, the, the Greenway there. And that's what I've done this evening, and I will support these other two. Um, I look forward to other conversations about other, um, social investments, other needs in this community, and I'm sure we'll have them. So, um, I think Parks deserves, or have earned, some of the things that we're doing. I think many of us have issues with using that kind of money in different facets. Um, so I am comfortable in my own skin, so to speak, with what I am going to do tonight, and I think it's not about either or. I, I think we can do it all too. If we approve 50 million dollars worth of bonds, we could do everything tonight, okay? But we're not gonna do that, so, I support this, thank you.
Thank you.
Call the question?
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 18-22?
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Rollow?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Sterbum?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Granger?
No.
Volan?
No.
Five-three.
That, uh, Resolution 18-22 passes five-three-zero.
Madam Chair, I move that, uh, Resolution 18-23 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, would the clerk please read?
Resolution 18-23, approving the issuance of City of Bloomington, Indiana Park District Bond Series 2018C, and in a amount not to- Bond Series 2018-C, and in amount not to exceed $2,965,000 to finance the cost of capital improvements at certain park facilities and costs incurred in connection with the issuance of such bonds. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution takes one of the statutory steps necessary to approve the issuance of bonds by the City of Bloomington Parks District under Indiana Code 3610-435 and 61.11720.5 in order to finance certain capital improvements at facilities operated by the City of Bloomington Parks Department, including the design, acquisition, and construction of: 1. Entryway beautification, tree planting, landscaping, and related improvements at the entryways to the city; 2. The replacement of trees along city roadways; 3. Alley enhancements and rebuilding; and 4. All related and incidental expenses incurred in connection therewith, and the cost of selling and issuing the 2018-C bonds, also known as the project. Your committee recommendation for this resolution is 323.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that Resolution 1823 be adopted.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Final grouping of projects includes entryway beautification at four to six entryways of Bloomington. That would include landscape improvements, public art, and aesthetic improvements as well as lighting to give the, a more pronounced entryway into the city of Bloomington. The City Parks Department has a large role to play in the maintenance of many of those medians and facilities, such as the entrance on the north side of the community at Miller Showers Park. The department is poised to award a contract to a consultant team by the end of the year to conduct a updated street tree inventory. We have in the neighborhood of 14,000 trees. We would like to have that inventory updated and be a little bit more precise with the available planting locations within the city right of way. Urban Forester Lee Haas estimates that number at approximately 1,400. This survey that, an inventory will be completed by early spring, and that will confirm those numbers and those locations. And we would like to equitably allocate replanting of trees on a contractual basis to augment our typical in-house planting goals every year of about 450 trees, with 1,400 trees to be planted in vacant street tree locations identified in the inventory. The third project is alleyway enhancements, and Adam Wason with Public Works.
Good evening, members of council. Adam Wason, Public Works Director. I'll be brief here. We described these over the course of the last meeting. We're looking to do some downtown alley improvements in some of our most prominent alleyways around the square and to the northwest, northeast of the square. The locations are there listed in the slide. What we're really looking to do here is cleaning, you know, get the alleys cleaned up. We're looking at beautification, lighting improvements, surface improvements, and overall just activation of these underused city assets. Again, here are kind of the locations. We're looking at the north side of the square, we're looking just east of the block, due north of the square, too. So, the Groatsy Block, as we, I think we talked about it last week, or is the one north of the square, the block with the Bluebird, and then just to the south of that block, just north of Kirkwood and between Walmette and Washington for the other location. If, you know, we're working through getting estimates, quotes, and different things together now, you know, if we, if these bonds are to be approved and we do move forward and find that we do, would have excess funds to complete additional areas, we'd continue within the downtown with those improvements. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do you have a question, Mr. Volan?
Yeah, the, was there a slide about the trees, about the, did I miss? There we go. Okay, sorry. My bad.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Mr. Wason? Actually, I just want clarification. There was something you said that we could do other things with some of the funds if this bond, what are some of those?
No, what I, we could do additional areas, additional block, you know, so right now we estimate that we can-
Beyond the three that we're talking-
Beyond the three, we may be able to get a fourth block in there, but it'll all depend on, you know, the, all the, all the improvements that we would make and where the estimates and the costs line out. We've got some initial estimates, but it is possible we might be able to do some additional surface work at least in some other areas.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volan?
Mr. Wason, what would that fourth block be if you had to have a candidate for the next block, if you could afford to do it?
For, from a surface-
Would it be west of the square?
Well, from the surface, I think I would continue south behind the Buzzkirk and do some surface improvements to that area, and then I would look to-
Do you know the alley I'm talking about, though, between Kirkwood and Sixth, between College and Morton? I guess it would be from the Irish Lion north to-
That would certainly, that one has some development projects going on right now, so I don't know if we would look to do it next year, but, you know, eventually, yes, would look to resurface some of those areas as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Rallo?
Mr. Wason, you mentioned you're going to have lighting in these alleys, and it's going to encourage people to use them, but I'm concerned about safety. Have you considered cameras in the alley as a potential safeguard?
I am not considering cameras, whether the administration, as part of this, no, but increase, you know, there is some lighting in some of these areas, but we would look to add additional lighting as well.
I see. Okay. And in terms of pedestrian access, I mean, some of these, yes, Mary Catherine Carmichael has?
Hi, Mary Catherine Carmichael, Office of the Mayor. I just wanted to address that last thing, if you don't mind. The lighting, we anticipate will activate the alleyways, and we have found, I was a Parks Board Commissioner for 10 years, and so, one thing I learned during that time, that the more active something is, the safer it tends to be. So, we don't have a plan in place right now for cameras. I wouldn't rule it out if it turned out to be an issue, but we feel that with greater activation in the alleyways, that wouldn't, that would actually discourage the kind of behavior I assume you're concerned about with talking about cameras.
Yes, yeah, I think it provides an additional, maybe, at least it's perceived security.
Yeah.
I think it probably has utility, and I just wondered about, about that, but it's, so it's essentially undetermined at this point, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Wason, just to follow up, the, what I was going to ask also is that, is it compatible to expect a pedestrian facility to, you know, pedestrians to walk by a dumpster? I mean, are dumpsters going to be, I mean, these alleys are used, say, for the Groatsy, King Doe Alley, or whatever you term it. There are challenges, I guess.
Sure.
And, and how does that mix work?
Yes.
Can you find other places for dumpsters, maybe?
It's difficult in these areas, but the one thing I can say is that the condition of some of the downtown alleys today or after a long weekend, you know, we're seeing, we're addressing those issues on a regular basis right now. One thing I'm looking to get back to, especially in these downtown alleys, and in speaking with these business owners over the last several months and several years, but particularly over the last couple of months, is that when we see conditions that warrant a fine from hand right now, if those types of conditions were to continue after we make improvements to the alley, we would no longer allow these businesses to utilize the alley for the dumpsters or for their trash receptacles. Certainly something we're enforcing more heavily right now and would continue to do so in an even heavier-handed way once the improvements would be made. But, yes, there's, there's not many other locations. I'd love to do more shared trash facilities in the downtown. They're just very difficult to get that type of coordination and amongst the business owners.
Okay. You're on top of it, I can tell.
Yeah, sorry, I've been involved in this, so I'm going to add one other thing if you'll indulge me. Thanks. I think the idea, too, is to work cooperatively with those business owners, and we think that there are some opportunities for some cooperative ventures along those lines that might be able to decrease the overall number needed. And so, we really want to look at what's new in that industry and see if we can't come up with some more innovative solutions to those problems.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sterbom?
Yeah, this is for Mr. Wason. I think a link could be made between downtown restrooms and the smell of these alleys downtown. I mean, there is, there is a use of these alleys that we would rather not have, and I think even simple, simple portables would be preferable to what we're experiencing in those alleys. So, that was one of my impressions when I took the tour. So, I think there's a clear link, and we should address that problem at the same time.
I'll allow Mary Catherine, too.
Yeah, I get the best topics. Yeah, the administration agrees with you, Councilmember Sterbom, and that is high on our list of things to pursue. We agree that we need to have public restrooms of some sort that eliminate the odor that you are referring to and provide a safe and reasonable place for people to relieve themselves.
I think that'd be great, thank you.
As part of this bond?
I'm not sure, I don't think we've put it in this bond necessarily, but we have, we certainly have other funding sources available to do this and are committed to doing that.
When?
You know, the sooner the better from my perspective, so that's the way we're looking at it. But, again, you know, we've got to find a location still. We're still trying to kind of hash out which model, which type of thing is the best, and we'll probably want to involve you guys in that discussion, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just restate the link. I think maybe those could happen together and be understood together, so we should think about the timing and-
Yeah, that's fair.
That it really does impact the alleys, all joking aside.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Ms. Pete Mount Smith?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Williams about the entryway projects. So, that's 1.25 million dollars. That's a lot of money, so I'm just wondering what, what you all have in mind for the entryways? How much per entryway? Do you have any further details?
We do not, we have not assigned budgets or even determined all the final locations. We see four to six locations, obvious north, southeast, and west. Miller Showers would certainly be one of them, but we have not allocated that budget towards any specific location. Just conceptually, we know what improvements we would like to make, and we would like to have a visually striking entryway to Bloomington as the overall goal.
So, how did you come up with the 1.25 million dollars?
Well, I would defer to Mr. Underwood on that. I know that the city has worked with a consultant that also happens to be our lead consultant on Switchyard Park, that has worked with entryway improvement projects in other areas of the state, and I believe they have assisted us in the allocations for each location or the total allocation as to how much it would cost. There's a precedent picture in the upper right, or the bottom right-hand corner, two examples, both of which were done by our consultant, Rundell. So, public art will certainly have a component part of the entryways, landscaping, lighting, just visually striking entrances is what we're after.
Okay, did any, did any other staff want to add something?
Yeah, I would just say, I grew up in Kokomo, Indiana. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Kokomo at all, but as you'd go up, so I guess it was State Road 31, you'd know you were in Kokomo when you saw the great big gas tower. That was, and then when you were leaving, you'd watch your rearview mirror until the gas tower disappeared from view. So, in a weird way, that gave people who lived in Kokomo, Indiana, a real sense of place. You knew you were back from vacation when the gas tower was in view. So, while we're certainly not proposing something as crazy as a gas tower, we are proposing that we come up with a design that will present that sense of place, that sense that "I'm back" or "I've arrived." We have so many people who come in and out of this town, sometimes with years in between, and we're hoping that our design will come up with something that is, leaves that feeling of "I'm back," and "This is the same place I left," or bring those memories back at the same time. We think that's an important way of establishing place, so. We didn't, obviously, you don't enter into design until you know you have funding, so we don't have any designs to show you.
Excuse me, I think Ms. Sandberg has a follow-up question.
I'm sorry.
Yes, will Sean Starwitz and the Bloomington Arts Commission have a say in the design elements and the branding? I mean, they're kind of the people with the finger on the pulse on the arts.
I couldn't agree more.
Thank you.
Mr. Volan?
We've talked about the idea of a public bathroom in people's park for years. Wouldn't that be a legitimate use of Parks Funds to put a public bathroom there? We have public bathrooms in other parks. Could we not have, could there-
I would decide, I don't guess, I thought we were talking entryways.
Because there's three things here. There's beautification, there's trees, there's repair of alleys. We were talking, Councilmember Sterbom was talking about public bathrooms and how frankly, the alleys are currently being used as public bathrooms. Was any thought given to including in any of the three bonds, some kind of public bathroom in a downtown area? Would that not be a legitimate use of Parks bonding?
Not for these sets of bonds. It has not been, as far as I'm aware, it hasn't been part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sims?
This is for Mr. Wason, and you might be able to help. But earlier, we were talking about the three blocks, and he said, "And if there's extra funds, we might do a fourth." Is it possible, instead of doing the fourth, to look into adding restroom facilities, the three, if there's extra? I don't know, can, I'm just throwing that out, I don't know, but is that something that can be considered?
I think that's more of a question about bond council and how the funds could be used, but-
There is enough flexibility in this, in this series and where we're talking about that restrooms could be added. There has been serious discussions ongoing about restrooms in the downtown area.
Correct.
We weren't able to come to a fairly concrete where, what type, as we were pursuing these bonds. It could well be that as we move down, that that discussion comes to a head and we identify funding. It could well be that some of these projects come in underneath the cost, and so we have the flexibility to add things. It could be that certain projects go over, so you have to cut back in areas, so that's the flexibility within each of that series. So, whatever's identified in that series, there's some flexibility of what can be done. And there are serious ongoing discussions about restroom facilities downtown, where's the best source of funds for those, and, and there's still a lot of questions to be answered about where, what type, and how. But, those are going to be ongoing as we look at these projects.
And you're saying this conversation or project coming to a head was purely pun not intended, correct?
Right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are, Mr. Sims, are you finished now?
Yeah.
Mr. Ra, Mr. Ruff?
This question probably from Mr. Williams, because it relates to the tree plantings. So, I'm going to assume, correct me if I'm wrong in this assumption, I'm going to assume that there are more potential tree location needs than are going to be able to be addressed even with this. So, what system will be used to decide where they go? And, as I sort of asked, because, you know, trees are a desirable amenity for neighborhoods, for streets, and who, who, how is it going to be decided where they go?
Well, we're going to do a canopy analysis as part of this inventory. I think that'll give us an aerial shot of underplanted areas. We also have to be aware of what lies underneath. There may be vacant locations, but until we complete the inventory, we may understand that fiber has been installed since years ago there were tree-lined streets in a neighborhood or something like that. Councilmember Rallo indicated that he would like to see us remove some of the Bradford pears in the community. There are neighborhoods that are literally monocultures of pear trees, so I think we'd have to be careful about allocating all of our bond dollars to replacing an entire neighborhood's worth of trees. But I think we would just try to distribute them equitably within the city limits in safe planting locations, areas that perhaps have sustained storm damage. Our practices are typically, Andy, when we remove a tree, we try to come back and replant them. But over time, there are going to be locations that we don't get to, we don't return to. There may be conflicts during the replanting season. We're just basically going to try to add to our in-house numbers of about 450 a year and allocate a contractual project to touch as many areas in the community as we can.
So, so you don't imagine or envision a matrix of criteria where scored?
No, I think we, I think we would, and, and we are looking for that type of a scope of work and a deliverable from our urban forestry consultant that conducts those types of inventories. It's what, where are areas that were very underserved with existing street tree canopies or mature trees? invasive trees, things of that nature boil it all together and try to determine an action plan as to where we can allocate the plantings.
So I was concerned about sort of arbitrary decision-making versus having some kind of a rubric or something that scores itself.
That's exactly why we want to use the services of these professional consultants is to not only have a, a, a plan that would coincide with the, the bond-funded tree planting, but have a long-term plan as to where our tree planting dollars should go equitably again throughout the community.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, we, I just had a side conversation with, with Paul LaMecovit. We had early in, in the bicentennial year, a public tree sale program that was very successful. We sold out every tree, and there were a number of options that people could pay to have a tree that they took and planted, or they could have it in tree lines at schools and, what am I missing? In parks. We saw, we see no reason why that we couldn't do one more of those, and we think it would be very successful. And that will help us address some of that gap between what we can do with this particular bond and, and what else is out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Volan?
I'll include the two previous bonds in this question. Of everything tonight, particularly here, which of these projects you're asking us to do will require additional approval from council, if any, of site design or details? Or are they all basically, I mean, because you haven't, they don't have some details for some projects yet. Will anything have to come back before us?
I'm not aware of any of the projects in these series that would need to come back to council because of a, you know, we were, would be asking for a variance or, or something other. You can-
Yeah, that's a possibility. I mean, I think technically or legally, if you will, we might not be obligated to do that, but I think certainly we, we want to do this, this is, especially I'm thinking in terms of the Greenway project or the Gateway, sorry, it's late, the Gateway project. I think that it's only fair that, again, I'm, again, thinking really long-term, you know, this, because it's a bicentennial project, we want to think long-term. So I think it would be appropriate to have lots of voices at the table.
Well, I mean, the Seventh Street Greenway, won't that require some kind of approval from council, the final design?
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay, so there's at least that one.
I, I would think so. I, I'm sorry, I was concentrating on these.
I, I'd asked about all three. How about the, the loop around Griffey? Will that also require some kind of council? Mr. Williams, do you?
I would think the approvals we would seek would be for our park board and probably the utility service board who still owns the Griffey property.
Okay, thanks very much.
Seeing no more questions, we're going to go to public for comment on Resolution 18-23. Is there any public comment, questions? Seeing none, we'll come back to council for final comment. Mr. Rallo?
I'll start. Again, I think this is a good community investment. I see this as a legacy project, the gateways, the sense of place. You know, part of our cultural identity, I think, is, is very important. I think the fact that we have such a vibrant art community in this community makes us very unique, and we all appreciate it, and I think people who come here appreciate it as well. And I think every great community deserves that sense of identity. And also, I think the arts provide us a way of, of understanding the challenges of our future and, and it goes deeper than just beautification. It's not, it's not just simply an aesthetic improvement. It goes, it goes much deeper than that. So I think it's a great investment. I think that the trees, bravo. I think we've, we've had a terrible loss because of the Emerald Ash Bore. Other trees have been impacted by drought and age. I think that this tree planting is going to be very, it's very much needed. I think it's also, this plan really, I'll, I'll speak for all bonds, I think, all of these bonds. They work within our previously adopted this evening, Resolution 1819, Sustainability Action Plan, because they address things like transportation, they address climate change and adaptation, they address the ecosystem health chapter, Chapter Seven, within the Sustainability Action Plan about enhancing habitat, enhancing greenways, removing invasive plants. So this to me is, it's a very good, sound plan, good community investment, and I, I want to express my appreciation to Parks and Rec and the Parks Board for your good stewardship on behalf of the community, responding to the community's needs and their desires through close communication with them and surveys and so forth. So thank you. I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Additional comments on my left? Comments on my right? Ms. Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I can't vote against trees, so I'm going to be supporting this one. The, uh, trees are vitally important, not just for their beauty, but also because they are carbon sinks, they absorb carbon dioxide, and they also make it much more pleasant to walk or even to bike, so getting us out of our cars. So I, I welcome this additional funding for public trees. The alleys also, I support beautification or, I don't know if beautification is the right word, but kind of a restoration of the alleyways downtown to make them walkable and just all around more pleasant to be in. I think that's an important investment in our downtown and will benefit everyone, including the homeless who pace the, the streets of downtown anyway. The entryways, I, if they were standalone, I would not, I would vote against that. I, that's again, in the category for me of something extra, something that's not really necessary. We've become known as a wonderful tourist destination and as a wonderful hometown. There's so many bloomerys who, you know, leave and come back. That, you know, without, without having fancy entryways. So again, it seems like, why do we really need this for 1.25 million dollars? Which I know in the context of this bond, we cannot spend on social services, but in the context of another bond, we could. So, um, Ms. Catherine, Ms. Carmichael said, you know, it's that, that gas tower in Kokomo was, you knew you were back home. When I was in college and it was coming back to Bloomington, it was the courthouse. It was coming back through downtown, especially when I came back for Christmas and the lights were, were on around the courthouse square, and that was the real warm feeling in my heart. I'm back home and it's a great place to be. So I mean, I really think Bloomington speaks for itself. It has enough wonderful architecture and history that I don't really see the need for these entryways. IU did entryways, of course, spent, I heard a rumor they were a million dollars each. And every time I bike past that, that big limestone thing at the corner of Seventh and Indiana on my way to work, I'm like, how many scholarships could that represent instead of this fancy IU thing? I mean, we know where IU, especially at that location, it's in the middle of town already. So I'm not in favor of those, but since you cleverly coupled them with the alleys and the trees, I will be supporting this particular resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. I am just going to urge you to-
I hear you.
I'm just going to urge you to think about the public facilities sooner rather than later. I think that would really improve our downtown alleyways and other, other aspects of downtown. Mr. Volan?
Yes, thank you. You know, I'm used to having to deal with PUDs anymore, and a lot of what we're talking about is no different than a planned unit development that a developer might bring. They want to do something that's an exception to our zoning law. We expect them to go through a process. There's a give-and-take process. I'll note that the mayor, you know, isn't really in favor of us negotiating PUDs that the administration has spent time negotiating. And here now, the mayor came and spoke at the beginning of the evening, but is not here to be able to say things like, well, we could do this. And I personally pledge to commit to, say, bringing forward even one public bathroom. We, the staff is unwilling to make that commitment tonight. I can imagine they might not have the authority to do so. But I mean, it's, it's noticeable that the mayor is not here, that he came at the beginning of the evening, but it was not convenient enough for him to be here for the whole thing. He praises this bicentennial bond, talks about how great it is for the community, but you know, isn't really interested in negotiating it. The, I, I don't know why it is that when it comes to projects like this, not only, I mean, is the administration asking permission to do these things, it's asking the council to fund it. I mean, at the least, the developer comes in with their own funding. It's that they, they get revenue from it, but these are talking about general obligation bonds. We're talking about tax dollars. Is, are they speaking in the name of the community? Sure. But, you know, it's not an accident the way that the three series were built. I should have had more presence of mind to break them up and to move to put the things that I could support into the, the one that I could vote for. You know, the alleys are absolutely a District Six thing. I lived near one of those alleys. It's a mess. It's been needed to be fixed for ages. The, you know, it's, it'll be a great asset to it, but, you know, I, I feel, I mean, I, I supported the first series. And I just, you know, because I feel so strongly about the inability of the administration to commit to even something that's not economic development or recreation, is a real disappointment. So I, with great regret, will not support this. And I would urge everyone, at least my colleagues here, to think twice about how things are structured and what authority we have to change them. The answer is, we have the authority to make these changes. There wasn't a political will here tonight to do that, which is disappointing because it sounds like there are a lot of people here on this dais who believe that there should have been amendments to this series of bonds. I don't think everyone thought every part of it was perfect. But, you know, if we're, if it's a foregone conclusion that we're going to support whatever parks brings us, you know, I think that we're, we're making a mistake thinking about things separately, things in silos. We should be thinking about things more holistically, even though the sources of funding themselves are in silos. So I, disappointedly, I'm going to have to say no to this, even though the alleys alone were the single most important thing in my district. The, I already supported the Seventh Street Greenway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call the question.
Oh, we had a couple of comments down here.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Sterbaum?
Yeah, I, I didn't get the memo about wearing antennae, but I'm just going to take this opportunity to thank the Parks Department, and I'm glad you found a way to finally bring these things to fruition. And I'm glad it seems there's going to be some support for these after all. And we will get to those other serious issues. That's, this is celebrated and it's a celebration of sorts, and we will see it for years and years and years and years. And I'm going to support this, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Ruff?
I just want to quickly concur with Councilmember Piedmont Smith about the, the gateways. That's the one I would have, I have the least enthusiasm for, and I share some for feelings about the IU, the university ones, too. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Volan?
Mr. Sterbaum, it's Halloween. Did you have to make a personal comment? Honestly, it's Halloween.
I was jealous.
Well, you can, you can borrow my costume afterwards. Call the question.
Second. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 18-23?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Volan?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Seven, one to zero, zero. Thank you. That takes us into legislation for first reading.
Madam Chair, I move that Ordinance 1821 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would the clerk please read 18-21?
Ordinance 1821, to rezone a property from residential estate to planned unit development and to amend the associated PUD District Ordinance and Preliminary Plan Regarding 800 East Tamarack Trail, Meadowwood Retirement Community Petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 1821 would rezone 1.25 acres from residential estate to planned unit development and would approve the amended PUD District Ordinance and Preliminary Plan for the Meadowwood PUD to allow a 75-unit assisted living facility and 20 townhomes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that Ordinance 1821 be referred to the Council Standing Land Use Committee on November 7th, which will start at 6:30.
Second.
Okay, do, do we discuss this?
It's discussable, yeah.
Does anybody want to discuss this at 10:38? Okay, can we just vote on it?
Yeah, call the question.
Call the question. Second.
Voice vote is fine.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Mr. Sherman is opposed.
Mr. Sherman?
So close.
Okay, thank you. Would the clerk-
Votes that relate to legislation are by roll call vote.
Okay.
Fine. Would the clerk please call the roll on us? Eighteen, sending 1821 to the Land Use Committee. Ordinance 1821.
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that Ordinance 1822 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Would the clerk please read?
Ordinance 1822, to rezone a property from planned unit development business park, oh, from planned unit development business park and residential single-family to planned unit development and to amend the associated District Ordinance and Preliminary Plan, Plan Regarding 1550 North Arlington Park Drive and 1723 West Arlington Road, Trinitas Development Petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 1822 would amend the boundaries of a previously approved planned unit development and approve an amendment to a PUD District Ordinance and Preliminary Plan to allow additional area in the PUD, new uses, and new development standards.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that Ordinance 1822 be referred to the Standing Committee on Land Use for the meeting of November 7th, which will start at 6:30.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion about the, this motion?
Call the question.
Second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ruff?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes. Both of those are moved to Land Use Committee on November 7th. At this point, we're at the, in our agenda for additional public comment. We do have a maximum of 25 minutes set aside for people who would like to make comment, who have not already done so. I think that nobody is jumping up, so I do think we have issues related to our schedule. Mr. Sherman?
Madam, Madam Chair, I move cancellation of Committee of the Whole for November 7th.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion about this?
That's because the two items are going to Land Use Committee instead of Committee of the Whole.
Seeing none, would the-
Call the question.
Second.
Can we do this by voice vote, Mr. Sherman? I call for a voice vote.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed or extensions? Thank you. So that meeting is canceled. Any other scheduled issues, Mr. Sherman?
Yes, we have an internal work session on Friday. Number of items, end of the year app order, amendments to the salary ordinance for this year. You recall last year, we extended interim protections for-
You recall last year, we extended interim protections for downtown overlays. That period is expiring, and there's a, I think you'll see an extension of that, so that's something you can pick up. And lastly, amendments to our living wage ordinance that would account for the budget decisions this year to remove the exceptions for certain city employees, so they're now covered by living wage. So, those are the topics that could come up. It's Friday at noon. Like to get a sense if, if any of those topics are necessary, in other words, we could narrow the agenda, if you have any thoughts on that, and also, who will be able to attend next, actually, the day after tomorrow?
Work session?
Work session, internal work session, one, two, three, four.
Good.
We have four.
Are any of those items the ones that you would prefer not hearing about or need to hear about?
I'm not sure that we need to hear about the ordinance change.
Okay, that'll be fine.
I think that's pretty straightforward.
I think we'll have enough to cover without that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do you hear an adjournment?
We adjournment?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.